What's the matter? As soon as we see Vice Chair Cohen, we'll go ahead and get started. All right, folks, good evening. Shortly after six AM, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the AM? Six o'clock. It's six o'clock somewhere. March twentieth, twenty twenty-four Planning and Zoning Board meeting. Before we get started, ask everybody to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, let me announce, I believe we have a quorum. To my left, we've got Jay Scheckman, Patrick McTeague, Sheri McCartney, and Steve Gannon. To my right, we've got Brad Cohen and John Baranco. Ms. Mamanos said she would not be here. Mary may or may not show up. We have four deferrals tonight, just so everybody knows. We're gonna have a lightning round tonight. If I could get a approval of the February twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll say yes, aye? Aye. Any opposed?
Patrick McTeague made the motion about the minutes and Sheri McCartney seconded it.
Okay, and before we get into the agenda, first of all, I'd also like to recognize Ella Parker here from the, what do you guys call yourselves these days? Planning and zoning board liaison. What is DSD? It's not the DSD anymore, is it?
No, it's Development Services Department.
That's DSD?
Yeah, yeah, that's, I thought you said Sustainable Development. That was the, yeah.
No, I just said DSD. I don't know what all those letters mean.
You hired them?
Also with us is Deputy City Attorney Dwayne Spence and Assistant City Attorney Sheri Wallen. And I don't know who all you've got on all your cases. Huh?
Carlan Deminich.
I see Carlan and I saw Yvonne.
Yvonne Redding.
I think I saw Michael. Did I see that? There he is. All right. Nancy? Nancy? Go once?
No, no Nancy.
All right. Okay, if you plan to speak on any of the items tonight, please stand and be sworn in.
Please stand and raise your right hand if you're gonna talk to the board tonight. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get into the meat and potatoes, I'm going to go ahead and solicit a vote to defer four items on the agenda. We're gonna start with case number one, PL dash R nineteen oh six two. A deferral request until May fifteenth. Anybody want to make a motion to defer it? Motion by Vice Chair Cohen?
Second.
Second by Patrick. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Next item is, any opposed? Sorry. Hearing none. Next item is case UDP Z two three zero zero one six, requesting a deferral till April seventeenth. Anybody would like to make a motion on that? Motion by Vice Chair Cohen, second?
Second.
By Patrick. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Next case for deferral is case number UDP Z two three zero one seven. Applicant is requesting a deferral until the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Motion?
Motion to defer.
Second.
By Mr. Cohen, second by Patrick. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Last deferral is case UDP T two four zero zero four, requesting a deferral until April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Motion to defer? You're on the roll. All right. Vice Chair Cohen makes the motion?
Second.
Second by Patrick. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we have four deferrals. Please let the record show that Mary Furtig has joined. I'll call it a dais. I'll call it the table. Picnic table, thank you. Well done. All right, so our first case tonight is going to be case
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you all vote for the minutes?
Yes, we did.
You did, thank you.
Passed unanimously without contest. All right, so first case tonight is case UDP S two two zero eight four. Do we need to do disclosures on this, Dwayne?
Yes, you do.
All right, then I will start down at my left, Sheri.
Very quickly, do you wanna accept staff reports? That's from me.
Oh, okay, and we ought to do that across all items tonight. Is it the board's pleasure to incorporate the staff's report into each item?
Yes.
Yes, some of, yes.
Okay, and motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Sheri, disclosures, please?
None.
Patrick, none.
Steve, none.
Jay, none.
Brad, none.
John, none.
Microphone on, and then I visited the site. Thank you.
And I have no disclosures. All right. Who do we have with us? Michael? I'm sorry? Okay? Please state your name for the record. You can pull it down.
Good evening, my name is Guillermo Rivera. I work for HDR Engineering, and I am representing the city of Fort Lauderdale Public Works Division, Stormwater Division for this project. Okay, so this project, this project is a proposed stormwater pump station. It's in within the Dorsey River Bend neighborhood. It's adjacent to two neighborhood homes, so it's in a residential area, and we're proposing to, you know, provide a public purpose use exemption. And this is, this is a critical infrastructure for the city's, part of the city's stormwater, you know, master plan to improve and reduce flooding within a lot of the neighborhoods, and this one specifically for the Dorsey River Bend neighborhood. This is one of the many projects that are going on for the city of Fort Lauderdale. So this project is gonna be including a stormwater pump station with an underground wet well, the associated electrical building that's gonna house like all the electrical components to power the pump station and an emergency generator on the site. And in order to kind of, to blend in with the neighborhood, we've added Spanish colonial architecture, Florida native landscaping. We are, you know, including a privacy fence around, around the property, six-foot vinyl fence. And we are, you know, really including elements to seamlessly blend in the pump station to the neighborhood. And again, this is a critical project for the city. It's gonna greatly reduce the, you know, the amount of flooding within the neighborhood, and it's also gonna be contributing to reducing the, it's gonna be receiving the flows from theirs to the pump station to be able to outfall to the Norfolk New River. And so we have included in the, in the site plan that was submitted to DRC, you know, all the elements to comply with the, with the DRC requirements, and we do have to reduce the landscaping easement on the side because we need to bring in power from FPL, and they require a ten-foot easement. And, you know, it is a very, you know, it's not, it's a small lot, and so we need that ten-foot easement for FPL to be able to run their, their power cables underground to our emergency generator. And so that, that is the request we're asking, and also the public purpose use.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
I do. Steve Gannon, I thought I heard you in the beginning mention something about pumping down an injection well, and then, but then I read and I heard you say about it's only gonna be pumped to the, as an outflow of the new river. Did I hear wrong?
Yeah, sorry about that. So what I was saying, it's an underground wet well, so the pumps are gonna be underground. So it's gonna reduce noise and visibility, right? And then the outfall, you know, via pressure pipe to the Norfolk New River. That's how you're gonna relieve all the flooding in the neighborhood.
Got it. So the source is underground, basically. Now we got it.
Yeah, all the pumps are gonna be underground, so the water flows down into the chamber underground, and then we're gonna pump it out to the river.
Okay. What was that lot before you're doing this? Was there a house on that lot? Is it an unused prop, piece of parcel?
It's a vacant lot. I don't know how many years, but it's just, it's a vacant lot. That's city-owned.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, at this time we'll open up the item to the public for comment. Is there anybody here that wishes to comment on this? Hearing seeing none, we'll close the public participation portion, bring it back to the board for further discussion or a vote.
One question?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, Mary.
No, I was gonna make a motion, so go ahead and ask a question.
Question for staff. What, what criteria does this trigger where it requires DRC review?
It's a public purpose use, and actually I'm glad that you requested it, because let me just put into the record, I'm not sure if the presentation captured it, but the relief is actually for placing this facility within the residential single-family low-medium-density RS eight zoning district. It's also to reduce the landscaping strip requirement along all property lines, which are adjacent to the residential property from ten feet to two feet and six inches, and also a reduction of the minimum lot size requirement from six thousand square feet to five thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. And Mike can clarify any of those points further for you, but I just wanna make sure that that's part of the record so you know what the request in front of you is for.
Okay. Mike, I'll ask you. And I'm, again, I'm just curious. So if a public purpose zoned site is gonna develop, do they always come before the Planning and Zoning Board? Because I've never remember
Yes, they, and I'm sorry I'm answering from mine, but they, but they do, yes.
You told me to ask.
I know, I'm sorry.
I'm just following orders.
If it's a public purpose, then yes.
It always comes before us. Okay. All right, that's my only question, because I don't remember seeing one of these before. But thank you.
Anyone else have a question before Mary makes a motion?
Well, I'll ask a question before I make a motion. And I'm assuming you met with the neighbors and went over the plans with them on either side. I mean, just so they know, they're getting a new house in between.
Yeah, yeah, so they, they had a public participation meeting, and then prior to the Planning, Planning and Zoning Board, they did send out notices. In fact, I think they actually hand-delivered the notices.
Yeah, okay. And the sign was there?
Yes, correct.
No, I mean, I saw the sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, you ready for motion, Mike?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to recommend approval of case UDP S two two zero eight four. Based on the staff reports and the testimony that we heard tonight, and we find that the application meets the applicable criteria of the ULDR cited in the staff report.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Patrick. Any further discussion? Leslie, please call the roll.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next case, UDP Z two three zero one one. Michael, you're up.
Good evening, board members. Michael Ferreira, urban planner and case planner for item UDP Z two three zero one one. This item is part of the Parks Efforts to Rezone Property. It's owned by the city. That's being used for parks and open space to the Parks Recreation and Open Space Zoning District. This property is, the request is to rezone eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-seven square feet of land located at five one zero one Northwest Twelfth Avenue from General Aviation Airport District to Parks Recreation and Open Space District. And I'm here if you guys have any questions, and we also have a member of the Parks Department as well.
Mary, I can tell by the way you're looking at me, you might have a question.
I do have a question. Thank you so much. What is the size of this entire parcel?
So the, the parcel that's gonna be for, that's being rezoned right now is
No, the part, the, the entire parcel, not just the part that's being rezoned.
So it's actually been divided, so the one that's, the property that's actually being rezoned right now is eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-seven square feet, so about nineteen point seven acres. It's only, it's only the south parcel, not the stadium.
So I, what's the rationale for not rezoning the entire property to park and leaving it as general aviation?
So staff received a directive to just rezone the property to the south. It was never, there was no directive to rezone the stadium as well.
Okay, well, obviously, I'm gonna, oh, you have to have a public hearing, sorry. I was gonna say, I, I think it's great they're rezoning this part of it, and I'm thrilled about that. I just would, just think it would make more sense to rezone the entire thing, park, as opposed to general aviation, but I'm sure you have some kind of a lease problem with that or something. So I'm looking over at you all, but I don't really care if anyone answers.
Well, I've got, I've got a question as well. What uses are permitted in that zoning district, in that proposed zoning district for parks?
For the GAA or, or the parks?
No, the parks, open space and recreation. What is permitted? What are the uses?
Active parks or passive parks as well. I don't have the, oh, I'm showing the list right here. You want me to list like all of them, or?
I'm, and it, it's kind of leading from Mary's question, because would a stadium be permitted as part of this open parks?
So for, so for here, you have just, so parks recreation, open space uses?
Dwayne Spence, Deputy City Attorney. No, a stadium would not be permitted under the Parks zoning district.
Okay.
But would it be grandfathered in because it was a stadium from the, from the nineteen fifties on? I'm just asking, because then at some point it became general aviation. And anyways, I'm thrilled they're doing twenty acres, so I'm not gonna dispute, I'm not gonna get into a big thing about it. It just seems, is a stadium allowed in general aviation?
So anytime you rezone a property on which an existing use is located, the existing use becomes a legal non-conforming use and is subject to the legal non-conformity restrictions of our code. Meaning, certain expansion cannot take place over fifty percent of the square footage of the the structure and, and additional things to that nature.
But they knocked down the existing stadium? No?
No, you're talking about the, you're talking about the existing stadium now.
No, no, I'm talking about the existing stadium that was there. I'm just saying.
The question is ramifications for rezoning the parcel as it is now. So what is constructed now would be considered a, the existing Chase Stadium would become a legal non-conforming use and subject to the non-conforming use and structure sections of our code.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. So it could be done, but it would have to be, I'm just thinking ahead to the future, not suggesting anything now.
Okay.
But it could be done. It would just become a non-conforming use. Because it'd be grandfathered in.
Correct. There are other considerations with regards to the airport property that make, make that problematic, but, but just to answer your question with regards to the hypothetical, yes, it could be done.
I mean, it's not, it's not like a stadium is general aviation anyway, right? So
You all amended the code to allow stadiums.
In general aviation, okay. I'm wrong.
If you land a helicopter on it. What I wanted to ask is, does the city have an idea of what they're gonna do with this land? Or it's just like, we wanna just convert it and then figure it out? I guess that's a better question than, you know, just like, oh, what can you use it for? Do we have, do we have a plan for it now? And is that why we're changing it?
Again, Deputy City Attorney Dwayne Spence, this parcel is a part of the overall qualified project that was approved as a public-private partnership with Inter Miami.
Gotcha.
This section of that
This section of that qualified project was designated as a community, I'm going to mess up the term terminology, but the community site, basically. So that's their only rezoning, the site designated within that qualified project as a community site.
Okay, so they can't put parking or something on this as a, as a park site? They can't put additional parking there? They'd have to, I, I think the original, the original plan was to put some like other soccer fields and like stuff for kids.
No, no, the exist, the existing plan is a community site.
Okay, so a community site, can they put parking there? That's what I'm asking.
That, that would be a question for Development Services. That has been not a part of the city's discussion, but I think I've heard that discussion in the press.
The park improvements could include some parking associated with the uses that are introduced into this portion of the site. And the current proposal for what's gonna happen on that site is currently going through the DRC review. So it, so it is, um, there is some surface parking. I think our Parks representative can speak to the details of that plan if you're interested.
And if it stays as general aviation airport, then they couldn't put parking there.
Well, they have parking there.
They can sell parking.
Well, I mean, with general aviation, you can, you can, you can have an active or passive park. You can have a park there.
No, parking.
But parking as in, as in the only use, parking or?
The only use is parking.
Uh, I don't see how it would be permitted just having just parking on, on the property.
And is, is, is Yvonne know the DRC stuff? Is that who we're, who's here?
No, our Parks representative.
Oh, Parks representative. Maybe she can just let us in on the secret? Come on up.
Yeah, come on.
Yeah, come on down.
While we're waiting for her to come up, is, DeWayne, is, is the current use of parking for the soccer team, will it be allowed if there is a rezoning here? I mean, it's not partial parking, it's not complimentary parking. This is when there's a game entirely parked.
Yeah.
If we were to do this zoning change effective immediately or whenever it goes into effect, would they still be allowed to park general parking for the soccer games?
I'll have to defer to Ella, Parker.
Yeah, I, I don't believe so. I don't believe you can have just standalone parking. It's, um, it, the primary use is the, the activity and then you can have supporting parking for whatever that activity is, but not as a primary use.
Mike, this is what they had promised in the original contract and the conversation's been about for the last four years. But I saw on the DRC agenda, aren't there 16 pickleball courts coming to DRC at the next, you all didn't see that?
Yeah, so our, our Parks staff can help address the details of that site plan, but it is under review. It's coming to, to DRC, you're absolutely right.
So what was the question for the Parks Department?
I, I think it was, what are the plans, the, the plans?
That are making their way through.
That are making their way through now? Like what's, what are we gonna build over there?
Park?
I'm sorry, I'm Leona Ozzamore. I'm actually not the correct person to ask that question to. I'm just dealing with the administrative portion of the rezoning. I do know that there were some discussions and proposal made for, you know, you'll have like open space, you'll have playground and, uh, places for the kids to play and so forth. But that's all I can provide for you right now.
So.
But can I just read this from the DRC?
Correct, so I, what I do know is that the, the plans that are being developed are city-developed plans. So we have a consultant that is developing these plans in conjunction with the District Commissioner, and that's what's being forwarded through DRC and then will be, um, will be shared with Inter Miami moving forward. But go ahead.
It's the community facility, the pickleball and the surface parking. That's, that's mainly the, the items that you saw on the agenda. It's, it's mainly, those components of it are part of that site plan.
And it's, uh, there's also community center as well.
Yes, community center, yep.
Is there still a dog park? Wasn't that part of it, two acres or something? And so Inter Miami has another place to park? Because, yeah, I was just at the last game and that whole thing was parked.
The parking I'm not familiar with, but I know the dog park was a part of it as well.
Wasn't this supposed to be soccer fields? I mean, I'm trying to, wasn't that part of the plan, soccer fields? There, there are some soccer fields and I'd just like to say, we're very proud to say there's a high school stadium there. And, um, and Stranahan and Lauderdale High play there and they use it for a lot of other things too, so that's been great. But this, this specific, is it okay if I talk for a second? This specific area is the area you've heard so much that was supposed to be developed into the community park. But I, the reason I'm glad it's being rezoned park is not because we object to parking or anything else, but because many of us have been advocating for areas that are park space to be zoned park so that it requires, it requires a, a more of a unanimous vote of the commission to change or sell that land. It's, gives much more protection, the citizens passed an amendment. I know I'm not telling you anything you don't know, so, in 2004. But it's really a great idea to do this to, and, and, and it is on the DRC agenda for this coming meeting. I just got this today, I think, that they are looking at 16 pickleball courts there. So, and I know I've heard Commissioner Herbst talking about that. I think that's the first phase of what's going in, but it's not the whole 20 acres. Doesn't take 20 acres, you're 16 acres.
19.73, yeah.
I, I would, I would say but to say that there isn't a plan in place now that can really be commented to the way everybody's sort of moving around it. But regardless, the, the ultimate use is gonna be a park. So that is what we're being asked to consider for rezoning. And I think what it may be, should probably wait until it goes through DRC and all that other.
Yeah, it's, it's on the agenda. This, this is just the first part of it. I mean, it's obviously 20 acres isn't gonna be, and pickleball courts.
So are there any other questions for staff before we open this up to the public? Do we have you sufficiently confused, Leslie?
Thank you.
You put your microphone on.
Thank you.
Go ahead with the public.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this item? Please step up to the microphone, give us your name.
I wasn't planning on coming up here, but my name is Sue Ann Campion. And my question is regarding the parking situation over at the stadium right now. As it currently stands, I, I do work on the airport there and I can tell you anytime that there is a game, that the traffic and the congestion and the almost accidents that you see constantly are just ridiculous. Fort Lauderdale and the city police do a fabulous job trying to keep everything under control. But you just built a stadium for 18,000 spectators and now you're planning on taking away the primary parking that was part of that plan supposedly at the beginning of this whole project. The fed, the stadium is fabulous, yes, there are some soccer fields for the public. I know there's other items that need to be addressed there, but I think, I'm just asking, is there any further consideration for the parking situation that's happening there?
So I will confess that I'm old and my memory is failing. That's not, my only confession. But I recall, and I don't remember who was on this board several years ago when Ms. Toothacre came through and they were asking us to grant them some parking relief in adjacent areas. So my understanding from that point that there was some concessions made throughout the area to suffice the seating capacity of that stadium. That is my recollection, that's probably four or five years ago. I think it was either while the stadium was being built or prior to, and we granted those concessions. So I don't know how to answer your question. You know, obviously people will park where it's most convenient. And that seems like a pretty convenient place, but we're not being tasked with changing this to some zoning that is convenient for parking. We're being asked to change this to a zoning for, for parks. That's the only thing we're being asked up tonight. I hear what you're saying. And, you know, someday they're gonna build a great stadium down in Miami and all of our problems are gonna go away. Although these are good problems sometimes because it's nice to get that notoriety. But, you know, we can't answer your question, I guess is what I'm telling you.
Okay.
I don't think the rest of the park's ready to go, so.
Well, that's true. Um, I'm just, another reason for asking was because a lot of the areas that they are using on parking, which are on the actual airport property now, are getting ready for development as well. And that's gonna take away another 2,000 or 1,800 parking spots, so. It's getting, invite you all to go out and see the stadium and during the game sometimes it's great.
Fortunately, the city of Fort Lauderdale owns that airport as well. So, you know, you've got an active commissioner, which is nice to see. And I think, you know, a proactive conversation with that individual would probably get you a long ways to where you wanna be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to be heard on this? Hearing and seeing none will close it to the public and bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion.
Okay, I have a motion, can I go ahead?
Hang on, hang on, Mary, let me see if there's any more discussion.
I'll, I'd like to mention that I've been attending a lot of the commission meetings with the P3 and then the, with the negotiations between, between Inter Miami and whatnot over the time. And the way I understand, and two things, we will be issuing a recommendation. We won't be approving and it won't go through. It's the commission that will do a final vote on this. And they have been in discussions about extending the parking, allow, what they're gonna allow them to do. So they're really up on this and it's for them to decide that. I don't think we're going to cause any trouble by putting the zoning through. The commission will decide and they're, they're doing that.
Okay. Any other comments before Mary makes a motion? From now on, you're gonna be known as Motion Mary.
I move to recommend approval of case number UDP ZZ, no, that's Z23011. Based on the findings of fact, the staff report and the testimony we heard tonight, we find that it meets the applicable criteria of the ULDR as cited in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second by Vice Chair Cohen. Any further discussion before we take a vote? Leslie, you're up.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Vertig? Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item up is case number UDP T24003. Carlann, welcome.
Hello, good evening.
How are you?
Chair and members of the board. Carlann Devonish with Development Services Department. And I am presenting case number UDP dash T24003. This is an amendment to the Unified Land Development Regulations to redefine the term grade. Okay. Uh, so the purpose of this amendment is to redefine what was done back in 2021. So in 2021, the code required for grade for non-habitable structures to be measured from the abutting property at the base of the fence, um, I'm sorry, at the base of the accessory structure. So if you're looking at my visual to the right, a good example would be on the left hand, you'll see property A and on the right hand, you'll see property B. If, when property A would propose a height, uh, I'm sorry, when property A would propose a fence, the fence would be measured from the grade of property B. So with that, usually based on that, a lot of the, a lot of the fences were a lot lower than what property A would like. So in the example, you can see that the max height on their property, it was at four feet. But because it was measured from property Bs, it was really at six feet. And so a lot of property owners had to go in front of the Board of Adjustment to request a variance for that additional height to. So in this case, they would propose a variance for two feet so that they can get that six foot, six inches that is allowed by code. Because there were several requests for this, the Board of Adjustment did send a communication to the City Commission to have staff to look into this, to amend it so that you can be able to measure from your property. We can go to the next slide. So on the next slide, we did change the code and we changed it to be measured from the principal, from, from the principal struc, structure. But unfortunately, what we have seen now is that the height of the fences are way too high. And so we've seen some permits coming in with some heights being as high as 14 feet. Because it's measured from grade and after you, you involve grade in FEMA, it just gets up to really be very high. And so what staff is proposing, and you can get to the third slide. So what staff is proposing is to measure the flood, to measure based on the finished floor, not to measure from the finished floor, but to measure basically based on natural grade. So as you can see with the image, I'm trying to catch up here. On property A, you'll see that the fence will now be at six feet, six inches on the side, which will be a lot more appetite for both properties. And then on the front residential right away, it'll also be based on natural grade. So that is what we're proposing, if you have any questions?
Any questions?
I should state that we are also adding, breaking up the grade to break up habitable structures for the special flood area and the non-special flood area. And then having different requirements for non-habitable structures such as the fences. So it's a lot more wordy, but it's just to help to redefine what makes sense based on the type of structure that is being proposed.
Mary, do you have a question?
Did you already make the changes on three?
I, and then I do have one more on page. So this would be on exhibit two, page three, which should be the last page in the packet. Under, see where it says equipment? I would like to make a change on the record to change where it says flood department and to refer to FEMA or Federal Emergency Management Agency instead of saying flood department.
Okay, so, do you have a question, Brad? This is a quick one. So the, is the, the builder would be responsible to grade it that way? Maybe I'm, maybe you're losing me here. So i- if the land is not graded in this, in the manner that it says proposed grade definition as opposed to the other one where it just drops down? Like I have houses, when I built a brand-new house, the guy next door to me has an old house and I have like railroad, you know, those, uh, the, you know, the wood ties because it, this property just drops. So is this proposal that instead of that, now we're gonna be grading downward to the, whatever is the property next door?
Your example's on the previous slide.
Correct, my, my example's on the previous slide. So like, uh, if you show that previous slide.
It'd be six, six from a, from the top of the.
So like, I have, I have properties that are, you know, I put a brand-new house on it.
Yes.
And the next door to me is a house that's built in like 1920.
Correct.
And then, so it just drops off like that?
Yes.
The new proposal is that we have to grade it down? Is that the new proposal? That's what I'm wondering.
This, if you wanted, James?
And is that gonna help with, like, what, is the purpose because the fence is too high? Or is the purpose to, to correct, like flooding? Okay.
James Hollingsworth, I'm in the zoning department.
Yes.
So there was a new flood ordinance that just passed at the end of last year.
Right.
And in that ordinance, FEMA is requiring us to no longer allow three to four foot of fill.
Right.
To be brought into a site. So that's what's going to make the diagram look more like the, the more recent one you saw.
Right.
12 inches is the maximum. So the, the house itself, the main structure and the finished floor will be up high.
Right.
But the yard is gonna be down.
Okay.
No more than a, a foot above natural grade.
I get it, thank you.
So in effect, the six foot, six tall fence plus if the builder brings in a foot of fill.
Right.
It's a seven foot, six is the maximum that the neighbor would see.
That makes more sense. John, do you have a question? I don't wanna force one out of you, I just saw your light on, I figured it out.
Listen, I gotta read this later.
Huh?
I, I, I'm the guy who has to read this later and try to figure out how high the fence can be and I'm having a hard time figuring this out. And I'm having a hard time figuring this out.
So along those lines, because it's, you know, I love it when government tries to build a perfect trap, mousetrap or whatever, and then it ends up where we're at. What is the minimum height of a fence, a fence? Not in, what is the minimum height of a fence that you can build?
The minimum?
What's the minimum height of a fence you can build?
There is no minimum.
Right.
What's the maximum height of a fence you can build?
Six foot, six inches in residential.
Six foot, six.
And what does this allow?
So, so the purpose of a fence in this application is to do what? It's, it's not to, it's not to hold back the drainage?
No, it's what would someone would typically want a fence for? So privacy or what have you.
So you have to build a fence on your property and if you grade it like it is there and you want a six foot, six fence, then that's what you should be able to build. Now that's, I would imagine for privacy. It may not be. I've got a six foot fence because I got a dog that's a pretty good jumper. But I don't, so I'm trying to keep the dog in the backyard. I, I, I understand what you're trying to do. I don't know where it gets us. But if somebody doesn't want a fence that perceives to be, I heard 14, let's be realistic and say 10, and they only want it to be six, then you build a short two foot fence on top of that and you achieve what you're trying to achieve.
Yes. You can't. So you wouldn't go to the maximum height of six foot. I see what you're saying. You would just build, let's say, a four foot fence, which would look. Like a six foot fence, yes.
On railroad ties.
That's what I did. And not ties.
All right, well, I guess you answered my question. Thank you. John, do you have a question? Because you're the one that has to interpret this later.
This is very close to my real situation in life, right? So.
And Brad's. So let's get it right. You guys tell us what you want.
I used to have a neighbor, his name's Len Tower, God rest his soul. He was the Commodore over at Coral Ridge Yacht Club. And Len, his property, natural grade is about two, three feet higher than mine. Because mine steps down to the water, his was up. That's his natural grade. He's existing, I'm existing. On my side, I look at a six foot wall. On his side, the wall comes to his knees and I get a phone call from him one day and he says, John, I saw the most beautiful thing today.
Uh oh.
So yeah, what's that, Len? He says, there was this vision of beauty in your pool floating around. It's my wife. So from his side, he only has this three foot fence. I would have loved to have had a higher fence because he was, yeah, he was creeping on my wife.
Right, I get it.
I love the guy, but that's just the way he was, so. But that's a perfect situation, so it's natural grade. So in that case, he's three feet higher than I am. The way this is written, does this allow me to build a fence six feet higher? So on my side, it'll be nine feet on my side.
Correct. That's what the current code would allow, well, that's what the current code allows now.
But that's natural grade.
Oh, it's natural grade, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's based on the principles.
Natural grade or proposed grade, because with new construction rules, you have to bring your, your, your finished floor to a certain elevation. You got to have certain grades. So it's going to be six foot, six over whatever the grade is at the property line. You have to build the fence on your property line. I mean, you have to, yeah, on your side of the property.
There's a three foot wall there now or whatever, or six foot.
But why is there a three foot wall there?
On his side.
On my side. It's the same picture.
All right, so but yours is natural.
And they're both natural now because they exist that way. That's what natural grade is.
Right.
So again, this is not the perfect mousetrap, I don't think. So I will have.
Well, you shouldn't have built the fence. You should have asked him if you could build the fence on his property. Then it would have been up high enough.
Well, it's the original thing that was built there and I never changed it. And you know, I took care of Len, so Len's no longer with us.
We perfect this mousetrap and create another. I have no further questions.
The point being, what is the change then? So in, in that scenario.
He's ready to go.
I, I still can't read this and understand how tall a fence could I have?
Last one. Proposed. Next one. No. The other. Key, okay, there, but you can give that to John, so. And it's also in your backup.
By code, you couldn't build that though. You have to have a retention area.
By code, no, you cannot do that now. That's why we're proposing to amend it.
But you'd still have to have a retention area on the new house property. You can't have your surface water leak over to the other.
So Carlann, in this exhibit, it shows a six foot, six inch fence on property B. And property B, that's my fence, is what you're telling me. Is that property B's fence?
You, no, that fence is property A's.
Okay, I don't care about property A.
Your property B?
I'm property B. Can I build? Let's say, let's see that brown, that improved grade there?
Yep.
Which it would never be that way, but okay, let's just say it is. Let's say that was three foot higher, natural grade on the left side. Property A is three feet naturally higher. If I, as the owner of property B, felt like he could look right over my six foot fence, because now he's three feet higher, so he's standing three feet higher. So on his side, it's only a three foot fence. He's looking right at my wife again. Am I allowed to build a nine foot fence on my side?
This is James again. So you can only build a fence on your property?
Right.
And so you would measure from the base of the fence on your property, which would not allow you to build a nine foot fence.
You're going to have the same issue that everybody was complaining about before and we're still going to go to Board of Adjustment every time?
Generally, most of the requests for variances came from the person that was building the new home. And what they, the person that was building the new home was restricted to doing a six foot, six foot, six inch tall fence, but their grade was way up here. So they had a brand new house and they only had a two or three foot tall fence.
Right.
Those people were wanting to add three foot. Like in your example would be your neighbor wanting to add in his new house, extra height to the fence.
Why would he have to, why would he have to add extra height? Why can't you build a six foot, six fence on top of his grade on his side of the property line?
At the time, the code would not allow that. That's why the code was changed to measure grade from the finished floor of the house. Because prior to that change, which was the previous one, prior to that change, they would have to come in and ask for a variance every time.
Why not change the code to allow somebody to build a six foot, six high fence off of the established grade at the property line of their property?
That's actually what we're attempting to do now. The, the, right now, the code as it is in effect right now, says that you measure from the finished floor of the home, not from the grade at the base of the accessory structure, but the finished floor of the home. So many people that are building new homes were, because FEMA didn't have the restriction to us for the one foot of fill, people would build a new house up three or four feet. They would raise their entire yard three or four feet with a retaining wall. And then on top of that, people would want to put a six foot, six inch tall fence. That's what resulted in these really, really tall fences. So with FEMA.
What's wrong with allowing them to do that?
Well, the neighbors in the older home did not want the nine or 10 or 11 or 12 foot tall fence. So we've been getting a lot of complaints about that.
A lot of people complain about a 40 story building going up next to a 30 story building because they took away their view of the ocean. I mean, the, why penalize the new home for what the old home guy wants? And I may eat my words someday because I may be in that very catch 22, but you know, I mean, seriously.
And the, the other unintended effect was the way that the code was written. It said all non-habitable accessory structures. So it wasn't just fences that this applied to, but it was every accessory structure. So a gazebo, for example, that used to be capped at 12 would wind up being, you know, plus six. So it, it applied to everything because that one definition for grade was all encompassing. So what the attempt now is to do is to make sure that that limitation happens at the base of the accessory structure. In this case, in this example, it's a fence. And it's going to be measured from, if the fill's brought in, it's measured from the top of the fill. And if there's no fill at all, like at the front, near the sidewalk, let's say, or the driveway, it's measured from grade. It's, it has to be graded down to the inside surface of the sidewalk or three foot from the property line. So the intent is to try and eliminate what you saw in the previous slide, which was the great big retaining walls, three or four foot retaining walls surrounding a new home. And then the accessory structure on top of that at full height.
Why do they keep dragging the term accessory structure into the argument? If you've got a gazebo out there, who cares? If you're building by code, it is what it is. You know, if it's a foot higher or a foot below your, your, your finished floor of your house, big deal. We're talking about a six foot, six fence.
The, the accessory structures had a limitation in height because they were allowed to be built into the setback, beyond the building setback. So they would be closer to the neighbors. So they were trying to limit the height of the accessory structures as they approached the neighboring property.
But anything over six, six you see anyway. So what difference does it make unless you're building five foot tiki huts or something? I mean, this is, you know, I started with, you know, you finally built a perfect mousetrap and now we got to figure out how to get out. And I think this is just going to kick the can down the road to bring up, you know, other issues.
Did you say that FEMA now is restricting the amount of fill to about a foot?
Yes.
Okay. So what I've seen, when your house goes up and your seawall goes up, and the reason they brought fill in was to help balance the backyard, the swimming pool and all that. So you're going to have up to the house, out the backyard, down, low swimming pool, up to the seawall. It becomes staircases everywhere. And when the water percolates under the seawall over time in a storm or in high tide season, the backyard will potentially flood because of the rising seas. And therefore you'll be stuck in your house looking out like an island. So part of, I understood because I'm in construction too. They brought the land up to create the whole thing being elevated high and dry. And it is, you know, somewhat to the dismay of the people that own the older homes, but the older homes will become newer homes someday. And then when that gets rebuilt, we would all be at a more satisfactory and functional level. So we are kind of pulling the rug out from under the new construction and creating up and down situations for elderly people and people with specialty, all that different stuff. So it's, I don't think it's a great fix, but.
I, I can only tell you that that's not coming from the city of Fort Lauderdale to the zoning department. That's from FEMA, who also sets the height of the seawall cap.
It's from the Board of, it's from the Board of Adjustments.
Yeah. Well, your house is seven feet, your seawall is six feet. Again, your land is only allowed to come up a foot. So, okay, I'm just pointing out some of the other things that will come from this.
John, you got another question?
I think we'd be, we got to be really careful about these graphics. You know, normally you're, and again, this goes back to a little bit about Patrick's talking about retaining water on site. Most of the time, we create swales around the perimeter of the property. We're excavating, creating berm, swales. You never have a situation where your grade is sloping to the wall like that. So it's a little deceiving when I see that. It just bothers me because I know it'll never be exactly like that. I get the point you're trying to make, six foot, six max on the neighboring property. Now, I think I would be more comfortable if it were six foot max on property A or six foot max on property A? Or eight foot max on property B when there's a differential grade, whichever is less? I'd feel more comfortable with that because you're never going to be exactly like your neighbor. It occurs everywhere. It, it just happens. I mean, some people are stepped down quicker and that's the natural grade of their lot at that time. When they do the survey, if you did my house, he's way higher. I'd never be permitted to build my own wall eight feet high on my side of the property. Or maybe I would go to Board of Adjustment and explain that to them and they would allow it. So maybe that's what you're trying to get at. Get people to go back to Board of Adjustment. If that's the case, then it's okay because at least somebody's policing it. So hey, maybe we keep it at six foot, six. And then if you want to go higher, you go there and ask for it. Because hey, it's a little different because the grade isn't the way the city imagined it, dead level. This guy's three feet higher than me. That's a Board of Adjustment issue. That's unique to my site.
All right. Any other questions before we open this up to the public? At this time, we'll open up this item to the public for any public participations. If anybody wishes to be heard, please let us know. Hearing, seeing, none, we'll close the public participation portion. Bring it back to the board for additional discussion and/or a vote. I'm sorry, and/or a motion.
So let me ask you a question. If someone were to make a motion, would they, would, would you think they should be making the motion to approve this or the motion to deny this? There's both motions on the sheet, on the cheat sheet. All right, I'll just start with a motion to approve. How about that?
Okay.
Okay. Motion to recommend approval of, hold on. Case number, getting to it any second now where my agenda disappeared. Can you read the, uh, thank you. The board hereby finds that the text amendments to the UDLR are consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Just to clarify, ULDR, you meant right? ULDR?
Yes, I'm on the ULDR amendment. You've done this very well.
Is that the extent of your motion?
That's the whole motion, yes.
May I make a friendly suggestion that you include in your motion? The designation of FEMA as requested?
You mean are consistent with the comprehensive plan?
They were.
I think he means exhibit with amendment to exhibit two.
Amendment to exhibit two to replace flood department to FEMA. On page three. And I'm making that, I'm amending it to that when you reread it.
So just for clarification, is the changes that you read, you read the changes already, Carlann? The, I suggest reading them and then she can put it in the motion.
Replacing flood department to Federal Emergency Management Agency. Approved base flood elevation as amended or revised from time to time, which will be on page three of exhibit two.
And C, equipment, correct?
Yep, that would be, I'm looking for the subsection three, CI.
Do you accept that amendment, Mary?
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to say.
I thought it was.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Vice Chair Cohen seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Leslie, if you'd call the roll, please.
Okay. Ms. McCartney?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. Fertig?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
No.
Mr. Scheckman?
No.
Vice Chair Cohen?
No.
Chair Weymouth?
No.
Motion fails. Five, two, three.
Now, do we need to make a motion to deny or do we just do that? You want a motion to deny?
I suggest doing that to just clarify why you would wish to recommend denial.
Okay.
Is there somebody that would like?
Why we, why we do?
Yes, just so that the city commission knows when it comes to them.
And I, if you don't mind, I could speak on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Bronco, would you like to make a motion?
He does. He wants to make this one right here.
Make a motion. Motion, recommend denial of case number UDPT24003. Based on the reasons that the text as written is hard to follow and does not cover all the conditions that may exist. It is not clear as to what natural grade is and on either side of the property line. And it's ambiguous. And the board hereby finds that the text amendments to the ULDR are inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fertig. Any further discussion? Leslie, if you'd call the roll, please.
Yes, one second.
And just to be clear, so I'm hearing this correctly, if you agree with what you just read, now we're voting in the affirmative. Okay.
Deny. Okay.
Do you have something to say?
I was going to say, do we need to also add the changes to the record? But no, we're good.
You said no, right?
He said no. We're good.
I thought.
Mr. Gannon? Um, Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, before we wrap it up, Mr. Baranco, you indicated that you had something that you wanted to communicate?
Yep, and I guess it's old business, or for the good of the city, recall...
I'm sorry, are you gonna do item...
Recall, one of our former...
I'm sorry, are you gonna do item five, communication to the city commission first?
I'm sorry, are we gonna do what?
Uh, seven, that's requesting of the Pearl.
We already deferred that.
No, we deferred that, I'm talking about, if he's gonna do communication, good for the city, do you wanna do any communication?
What's the difference?
Well, he mentioned if it's for the good of the, of the...
Well, it's, it's, I think it may have been brought up under communication to the city commission previously, so we had a former board member who had asked staff to look into the parking requirements for medical uses in the city of Fort Lauderdale, because they seem excessive, I have run in that over and over again recently, where folks are looking at different properties, and the existing parking just doesn't match up with the code requirements. We find that a lot of these developments that exist would do fine with less parking, so we just thought it'd be a good idea if we follow up, because we never heard anything back from staff on that, so maybe next meeting, you guys could do a little research on it, I know we've worked in other cities where the parking requirements are a lot less. And I don't know if it's right or wrong, I know we can look at I T manuals, staff can look at that, they can look at other cities.
We've actually done that, and we concur, we've actually reached out to other cities, our requirements are, in general, are higher, and the I T E manual also supports a reduction based on what we have versus what's the typical standard these days. I know when we had communicated, your previous communication to the city commission, the commission had some concerns that were kind of broader, so I'm not sure if medical use was specifically pulled out as a discussion point, and perhaps if the board wanted to communicate something clearer just regarding medical uses, I know I've heard things about us losing business to adjacent cities because of that, because people don't wanna go through the parking reduction process. And there are some nuances that I think, you know, our transportation and parking representative can speak to about in the future, that's, that's fine too, but certainly, if that's a communication that the board wanted to make for, you know, for, give staff some policy direction from the city commission to take a deeper look and really present some findings of fact, that would be certainly up to you all.
Could I make a comment?
Sure.
When I was on planning and zoning and before, like in the early 2000s, prior to 2010, say, I remember distinctly Robert Lockery coming to ask for a parking reduction at Broward General. Now, that's real close to our office, and I wasn't so sure about that, and then, it's like, no, they'll never fill that parking lot. But if you've been to Broward General any time in the last few years, you know you can't find a parking place, I think about this all the time, because I can't, not that I'm there all the time, but you can't find a parking place, so I think that there's a way to probably accomplish what you want to accomplish, but I would hate to do it, I mean, I was up near Holy Cross the other day, it's like a nightmare.
But you're talking about a hospital, not a medical office, not a medical use, so I think that's where John's goal is.
And I want to make sure that whatever we do for these large, it does not impact these larger, because as that area developed, they built the doctor's office across the street, then they built the one that was, you know...
Yeah, we only looked at medical offices, not hospital parking, and when I was talking about nuances, things like, you know, dentist's office, and how many chairs they have for cleaning versus a medical office that sees a lot of patients online, does, you know, there are some nuances where the ninety percent of them are overparked, maybe for the few that aren't, there's some specific criteria, for example, how many seats you might have, but that's something, again, if it was communicated, we don't wanna get into that level of detail without that policy directive, but if we had the policy directive, we could certainly analyze all that, and then bring that forward as a potential amendment.
So depending on what the medical office is, because I would tell you that the medical office that then went in across the street threw it over the top, so, because that was then added in, and sharing the same thing, so just so you, you protect against that, and however you do it, around all of these hospitals, they seem to have a lot of doctor's offices, for some reason, we don't know.
But that's a doctor creating his own pitfall, he is overbooking patients, and they can't get in, I mean, that's, he's a maker of his own demise.
If he's doing it, if he's doing it, but ten years down the road, which is what we're now at, maybe fifteen.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, a hospital zoning is different than a medical office?
Right, a hospital would be different than, right.
Because I concur with what you're saying about Broward General and Holy Cross.
Me too.
But I'm just saying that what really, what event, what happened at Broward General was they built all those medical buildings, the same thing at Holy Cross. And that would be a medical office.
So John, would you like to make a recommendation to the city commission, or do we need to, because you said you're exploring this?
It's just communication to the city.
Is there something that you want to communicate, or do you feel that she's got this addressed?
I would love for you guys to bring that up to commission, and see if they might rekindle that, you know, and...
Specific to medical offices?
Yes, specific to medical offices.
Can we verbalize that and vote on it, if you could, please?
You probably just wanna state a motion as to what you want and why, and then that way, they can, you know, talk about it.
Motion that we have staff communicate to city commission that we would like to address the excess, well, not excessive, the disproportionate parking requirements for medical use in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and we would ask that that be looked at and considered to be reduced.
Couldn't we just add the words, not, not using, not using hospital parking?
Not including hospitals, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Patrick, any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, or none, anything else, Jase, you get your light on.
Yes, Ella and team, we had some previous conversations around, in votes around the terms of planning and zoning board members, and when those would be, if those would be extended an extra year or not. Can you give us an update on where that stands?
It's my understanding that the city clerk's office has sent a communication to each of the commissioners, and what the process will be, they will notify the clerk's office as to their desire to extend existing board member terms for those who, terms will expire in May of this year, and and then a resolution would be brought forward extending those terms.
Thank you, anything else? Before we adjourn, real quick, I will not be here at next month's meeting, so I'll look to Brad to be the chair of the meeting. In the unlikely hood that Brad can't make it, I would suggest that at this time, we maybe nominate a vice chair, in the event that Brad can't be here, is that okay to do, is this right form to do it, or do you wait until next month's meeting and have a throwdown?
Like a temporary?
A one-time-only?
A one-time-only. Vice Chair.
So I'm set for trial in a couple cases out of state in April. I, you know how that goes, I don't know if I'm gonna go, if I'm not gonna go, but I won't be able to know that until I go in front of the judge in April, and generally, I mean, some of them are federal cases, they're not gonna be like, hey, I gotta go to planning and zoning, they're gonna be like, yeah, sure, see you later, so, what, just in case, I don't foresee, it seems like they're not gonna go, but I don't foresee, you know, I don't wanna be in a situation where we don't have someone that could head that, that next meeting, just in case, I don't think that's gonna happen, but...
So we don't have rules of procedure that govern this situation, what is typically, what typically occurs is in the absence of the chair and the vice chair at the particular meeting, before the meeting begins, the board will vote for a temporary chair person to chair that meeting.
Alright. Yeah, it's fun, good. I just wanted to address my absenteeism.
Yeah, and it might not, like I said, I don't anticipate it, but just in case, it's always good to be prepared.
Okay.
Anything else?
Boy scout image.
Maybe you already addressed this, should we keep all these cases that we didn't hear tonight, are we gonna get them all over again?
Well, I get mine electronically, so I don't need them.
Please keep them, if you, if you, if you can, if someone's already discarded them, let me know.
Thank you all.
I did, but then we never...
Get it electronically, Mary, save the world.